Chad, will you lead us in prayer, please?
I will. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father of mercy and love, we gather today and thank you for all of your many blessings to us, Father. I thank you especially this day for the grand opening of Zion Hill Baptist Church, Lord, and what that building has meant to so many in our community, Lord. And I thank you for giving leaders visionary guidance to make that a reality, Lord. I ask that you be in our midst tonight and let us have your grace and mercy as we make decisions for this great city in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Welcome to the July 18th City of Nacogdoches regularly scheduled meeting. If you will, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, next item on the agenda is open forum, and there is none denied. Okay. Next items to be removed from the consent agenda, I have one, which is 5K.
And Mayor, I'd like to remove item C. And I'll move that we approve the balance of the consent agenda except for items C and K.
I'll second that. Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Okay. Yours is first.
Okay. Just wanted to get a little background on this item.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Jason Smith, Utility Construction Manager. This item is a regular scheduled replacement of an existing vehicle. It's a 2013 year model. It's in the 75,000 to 80,000 mile range, just having a lot of mechanical issues and failures. This size vehicle, being a 4500, is obviously a very large vehicle, intended to pull heavy loads, trailers, our sewer jetting machines and things of that nature. It's also a four-wheel drive vehicle so that we can take it off-road to get to some of these cross-country line segments and off-road areas that we have to maintain our lines. We're currently still receiving bids on some of the additions and attachments to the truck. That's why we put in there for $88,000 roughly, and we had to do it that way because we are actually waiting on the third quote to come in for toolboxes, beds, and lights, safety equipment, things of that nature. So, we're trying to get the price down as much as we can, but currently I think that is where we stand as far as our current bids. This vehicle is available today. It is actually on the lot, which is a rarity right now, which is why we're moving pretty quickly to try to get this in. It is on the buy board contract, so it is through a cooperative purchasing agreement, and we can take the delivery as soon as, I think he said, tomorrow or Thursday.
Excellent. My primary question is related to the additional equipment. Just wanted to hear some background on what those items are. When a taxpayer sees that we're spending $88,000 on a single truck, we need to be able to articulate exactly what we're putting on that truck. And you know that I typically will pull an item that has this sort of a price tag on it.
Yes, sir. And just for example, this is a cabin chassis truck only, so there is no bed on this truck during the purchase. So, this is a flatbed bed on the truck. It's called a, considered as a stake bed. It includes, I think, four or five toolboxes that are built onto the bed for equipment and machinery tools, things that we need on site. It also includes, one of the items that we're adding is a winch. Currently, our department does not have a vehicle with a winch on it, so we have to contact the street department to come and assist us if we get stuck in the woods. And so, this would be our...
When you get stuck, you mean?
Yes. We also have to add the safety lighting on this. Obviously, the truck comes with your typical lights, but we work in the streets so much, we have to have our work lights for working at night. We also have to have our flashing lights. Just the lighting package itself is about $22,000 to $2,500 for the vehicle. I still do not understand why they do this, but every four-wheel drive vehicle that we order comes with street tires. And so, we have to budget $3,000 to replace those street tires with an all-terrain tire. So, it's items like that. I've got, one of the other ones here is, this truck will also be equipped with a 100 gallon fuel tank to be able to fill our backhoes and other auxiliary equipment. Our Jet Rod is a diesel as well, so it will have fuel to be able to refuel to not have to come back to our office to refill before we can go back out and continue working. Let's see, what other? I believe that that is the majority of that. Of course, we do have to have some wiring and electrical work done for the winch mounts and things of that nature.
Sounds great. Thank you so much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
I have one question too, Mr. Smith. I realize you use the buy board. Was there any way to use a local vendor in this?
We had contacted Tipton and Gown Chevrolet earlier, and I will say, just a few months ago. And at the time, they did not have a vehicle in this size range, and they said that the order process, which we could go through, would be, could be anywhere from six to 12 months. And so, we were actually getting ready to bid a vehicle out when we were contacted and said that they actually had one on the lot, so.
Thank you for trying.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item 5C.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Okay. Item 5K, this information that was submitted to the city secretary was incorrect, and this item will be moved to the August 1st agenda with the correct information. All in move, we're just taking it off, right? Okay. Okay. We don't need a motion on that, right? Okay. All right. Okay. There being none, we'll go to the regular agenda. And item A, discuss and consider approval of the city's partially self-insured health plan and authorize the city manager to execute any and all renewals, contracts necessary for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. Ms. Hall.
Mayor, Members of Council, Anita Hall, Human Resources. I'm here simply to introduce our speaker, Jeff Summers.
Who?
That's why the first thing says who we are, Randy. Do I need your phone? Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity tonight to come talk to you about the employee benefits renewal for the 2023-24 plan year. Do we have, let's see, make sure Jan, I know how to do this, I do this right?
Is it down?
While we're doing that, one of the first things on the background is Cadence Insurance, who we are. We have had a few name changes over the last several years. For most of y'all, y'all have known us as Joe Max Green Insurance Concepts for many, many years. In 2008, we were purchased by Bancorp South and became Bancorp South Insurance. Over the last year, we merged with Cadence Bank, and it was a true merger, and people way above my pay grade decided that we were going to be called Cadence Insurance and Cadence Bank instead of Bancorp South and Bancorp South Insurance. We're still the same people. We're just now a different name, and been a different name now three times since I've been an employee of Joe Max Green Insurance since 1997. Same people, just a little bit different things that have to go on behind the scenes. We are now owned by Cadence, and we go by Cadence. So, I just wanted to make sure that when you say Cadence, who are these new people? I know a lot of people know who I am and who we are in the community, but I just don't want there to ever be any confusion on who Cadence Insurance is, and also what we do throughout the year. One of the main things that we do is obviously consult with the city manager, the CFO, all the HR team, and even members of the directors on ideas on employee benefits and how we can improve employee benefits with the city and the city employees. And that could mean anything from plan design rates, obviously, that are important to the employees and the city, to the day-to-day functions, like Ben Admin System, helping employees with claims, helping the HR team with issues that come up administratively, things like that. That's on a day-to-day basis. So, just want to give you just a little perspective of what we do on a daily basis. We are local. We've been local here for well over 50 years. Mr. Green still comes to the office every morning and tells some of the same stories that he's been telling for the last 50 years, and that's quite all right with me. I hope he continues to do so. But I just wanted to make sure, and we talked a little bit about that the other day. Now, Jan, make sure I do this right.
It's supposed to be right, but Michael may have to move it forward.
I'm going to hit all the buttons.
Yeah, I think if you point it toward the...
Right here.
Yeah.
To the right, to the one on the right. Okay, so this is what I was talking about in the background, who we are. And then, just a little bit more background, City of Nacogdoches has been a self-insured health plan for many years. They offer health insurance and dental insurance to employees and dependents. The employee-only base health insurance plan and the employee-only dental plan is 100% paid for by the city, and the city employees do not participate or have to pay any premiums for that coverage. Like I said before, it is a partially self-insured health plan. Dental is a fully self-insured health plan, so there's not any reinsurance attached to that, on that particular product. Blue Cross Blue Shield is the administrator and the insurance company for both the health and the dental, and has been for many, many years. And a lot of people ask me, they ask, I think, probably the city manager and other people within the community, why is it always Blue Cross Blue Shield? And does Cadence Insurance, are they Blue Cross Blue Shield employees? Well, the first part of that is, we're not Blue Cross Blue Shield employees. We work for the city. We make sure that we go out impartially and look for the best product possible for the city. It's been with Blue Cross Blue Shield for many years because we feel like that has been the best product. The discounts are superior in rural areas of Texas. That's why a lot of times you'll see, well, for instance, you'll see the school districts with Blue Cross Blue Shield, the state insurance program is with Blue Cross Blue Shield. They've changed a little bit over the years, but they end up coming back to Blue Cross Blue Shield, just because in rural areas, the discounts for the claims are so much better than some of the other carriers out there. If you get into the metropolitan areas, Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston, that gap closes a little bit, so you'll see United Healthcare, Cigna, and other carriers as competitive, and sometimes more competitive than Blue Cross Blue Shield. But for our area, that's why Blue Cross Blue Shield has been the carrier for many, many years, just like even for the county. I think the county's been with the Texas Association of Counties and Blue Cross Blue Shield for as long as I may have been a resident of Nacogdoches, which has been 27 years now. So, just kind of give you a little highlight on why Blue Cross Blue Shield. I think this is a real important one. The rates for the employees for their health insurance have remained the same for the past five years. So, no increase to the employees for the last five years, and that's really almost unheard of. I actually talked to the human resource manager for the county today, and over the last eight years that she's been the HR manager, they've actually had one decrease, believe it or not, for their employees on the dependent side. Two times in eight years, they've had a level, so no increase. Every other year, they've had a rate increase. And when you look at some of the rates that I'm going to show you tonight, I'll go over what, to just kind of give you an example, what the county pays versus what the City of Nacogdoches actually has to pay, or their dependents pays for their health insurance as well. Also, the City of Nacogdoches pays for some ancillary products, which a lot of cities do not do. Employer-paid life insurance. Last year, employer-paid disability insurance. In the past, it was a voluntary benefit, which just meant more money that came out of the employee's pocket, and this past year, it was all paid for by the city. Two years ago, the city decided to pay for employee-only dental insurance, which usually that's completely voluntary. And so, there's a couple of things that have happened over the last two years that I think has been very, very positive for the employees and the City of Nacogdoches on that. There's other voluntary products that I mentioned, voluntary life, vision, accident, critical illness, hospital indemnity, and all of those are fully insured products, and those are all voluntary that the employees pay for if they choose to, not forced to pay for them if at all, if they don't want to. So, just a little bit of background on what you have and kind of how we got there. Any questions so far? Okay. Let's get into some claims experience. Last year, I came to you all with very, very bad news, I thought, with the way the claims were working. We had some tremendously high claims for individuals, and obviously, that's not good for the city, and really not good for the person that has those bad claims. And some very serious situations that were going on within the city, and that has really cleaned up this year. We have had probably one of the best years that I can remember on record for claims, and that's why when you look at this, you're going to say a 290% decrease in gross medical claims. And that's because of how much we have fallen down on low claims this year. We have not had a claim go over $100,000 this year, which is almost unheard of with the number of employees and dependents that are on the plan. So, last year, from June 1st of '21 to '22, we had a little over $3.2 million in gross medical claims. And then, once reinsurance paid those claims, because anything over $125,000, Blue Cross Blue Shield pays back to the city. So, that's why you see the net claims there are $1,009,000. This year, there's not been any reimbursements back to the city because there's not been anything go over $125,000, so that's why you see that number the same. But still, a 56% decrease in your overall medical spend. Pharmacy spend is up a little bit this year, 6.7%. We've all heard of the drug Ozempic. It's a very, very popular weight loss drug. There are very, there's quite a few folks that are enjoying that drug in the city, and hopefully, it's really working out well for them. It's expensive. It's around $1,000 a month for each prescription, and there's several people that are taking it. The nice thing about that, it really works well for people. Long-term effects, we're not as sure of and how that works for folks, but we do know that people do lose weight. They do lower their A1Cs, they lower their blood sugar levels, their cholesterol levels come down. So, all in all, we feel like it's a good thing. But it's also expensive as well. And so, that's one of the things that has driven the pharmacy cost up this year, mainly on the diabetic side. A lot of those people are even borderline type 2 diabetics. And so, that's been a very popular drug, but also a very, I think, useful and good drug for folks that have taken it. We've not really gone up on anything that we saw in the claims experience that would cause any alarm, other type of medications that are being taken, like specialty drugs and things like that. So, it's up a little over 6% year over year. Administration and reinsurance cost is down around 5%, so you see the total is down $800,000 or so from last year, which is great news, probably the best news that I've ever been up here to go over with the city council. This next page is your high-cost...
He needs to change it.
Oh, you're doing it for me. Thank you. Who's doing that for me?
Michael, yes.
Michael, thank you. Wherever you are, Michael, thank you very much. So, this is what I was talking about on the high-cost claimants. You'll see, June 21 through May of '22, we had seven claimants between 50 and 75. This year, just two. And then, three between 75 and 100, four. Then, for the June 22 through May 23, zeros all the way down the board. So, we have six total claimants that have gone just under $100,000, between 50 and $100,000, where last year, we had a total of 15, and we had two that were over half a million dollars. So, you can see, just by four, five, six people on the plan that have really high claims, what that can actually do to your health plan. So, knock on wood, let's try to keep that going for next year as well. This is what is very impressive, the health fund balance history. And this is really, now we have 10 years of history on this. And as you'll see, as of July 1st, we're as high as we've ever been at almost $2.5 million in the fund balance. A lot of people ask me where we want to try to be. We want to try to be close to what our expected overall claims liability and fixed cost liability is for that particular year. And next year, it's going to be right at $3.1 million, so we're getting close. We're not there yet, but you can also see there were years that were very lean. Back in 2015 and 2016, Ms. Kerbo was calling me daily, making sure that we were where we were with the claims. And so, we've not had to do that in the last several years. So, every year, it went down last year. Remember, we did not have that great of a year last year, so it did go down, but this year, it's gone up to almost $2.5 million, which is fantastic. I know we get into a little bit more of some numbers here. I want to try to go through this and not confuse anyone, but try to make this simple, but I think it's real important. So, for the 22-22-23 plan year, the contributions from the city and employees was roughly $3.3 million, and a big portion of that coming from the city. The city budgets for 324 employees, and they budget $725 a month for each employee, so that's where the $2.8 million. And then, based on actual enrollment, $490,000 have been payroll deducted from employees' accounts. So, there's where the $3.3 million came from. We always like to try to fund between expected and maximum claims liability, and this past year, we were able to do that. Remember, we even talked a little bit about moving into the CARES Fund Act? We did not have to do that. We did not have to touch that, which I think we were trying to allocate around $350,000 or so. It was earmarked, but we didn't have to use that. And so, we were, had expected $3.2 million, the worst-case scenario, if everything did not go well at all, it would go to $3.7 million, and you see the actual cost were $2,650,000. So, that's where you still see the big difference in the fund increase, or the fund balance increase. So, the estimated for next year. And a lot of people ask me, well, if we had $2.7 million or $2.6 million, why isn't that the estimated for next year? Well, we know we had a really, really good year. It would be like if you had a fully insured plan that was $3.7 million and your renewal was at 2.6. We would know that that would never happen in the real world. They would probably give you a complete pass or no increase at all, or maybe just lower it just a little bit, but they're not going to lower it very much. And we want to take that same approach when we're looking at trying to be physically conservative with what we're doing and trying to raise fund balance. And so, the contributions from the city and employees for next year were actually a little bit less than what they are this year because of some things I'm going to show you in a couple more slides. Expected costs are down a little bit, about $100,000, and the maximum is a little over, just almost $3.6 million. So, if the worst-case scenario, we would have to dip into fund balance about $350,000, which we're completely okay with, especially with our fund balance that we have today. So, then the next page, I think, gets really exciting for people because this doesn't happen very often. So, you'll see your current funding rates on the far left. So, you'll see that the employer pays $725, whether they take, the employee takes the base plan or the buy-up plan. And then, this is what the employee pays for their spouse, children, it does not matter how many children they have, or their spouse and children together, and then also on the buy-up plan. And then, you'll see what our recommended funding rates are for next year. Still, zero cost on the base plan. You'll see that we've actually given a decreased recommendation for spouses, even more so for children, our child or children coverage, and even family coverage. On the buy-up plan, we left alone because we typically see that people that are moving to the buy-up plan are people that utilize the plan even more, and so, we want to protect that part of the plan. So, we want to not necessarily try to drive people to the base plan, but we want to make it more encouraging for them to take the base plan if possible, try to keep those rates down, and the overall plan down. This has not happened in many years. Like I said, five years, we've kept the plan flat. This is the first year that I can remember that we've actually recommended a rate decrease for the employees and no increase to the city at that point. Giving an example, Nacogdoches County, on their family rates are $1,226 a month. So, we're looking at $767 a month for the family rates for the base plan, for the city employees. So, I think that's very positive news. Any questions so far? I'll keep on going as you tell yourself.
On that example you're mentioning, that, the employees' contribution to that, what's the difference in the total? So, you mentioned what the family cost for an employee of the county would be. What's the overall cost difference?
It's $100 a month for each, for the family unit. $75 for children and $50 for a spouse. Okay. That was our recommendation. And we recommend that to try to make sure, and that's where you try, that's where it can become a little dicey on how much you really want to, because we would love to go down even further. We would love to have made that $250 or $300, because we want people to be able to afford family coverage. But at that point, you start to worry about, well, are we going to have enough to pay for if we have a bad year? And that's why when I went back and looked at, you know, when I would go back and look at expected versus maximum, I always want to make sure we're between expected and maximum. And if we go down too far, it throws us below the expected number, and we just don't want to do that.
But we also want to try and incentivize people to add their people, right? Because the more healthy people that are on a plan, the more we increase our fund balance and the less claims that will be paid out ultimately.
And that's why probably we did the children rate at $75, because children actuarial are known to be less expensive than actually spouses are. So, spouses are going to obviously be employee and spouse, employee and family, and so, we wanted to make sure we did give, especially that single parent that has to have their children on the plan, we wanted to try to give them at least $75 off of that rate.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
So, this may be the time to ask that. I'm wondering if we know how many families are not choosing coverage for their spouse and children? Do we have any gauge of that? We don't?
We really don't. It's hard to tell.
That's all right. It'd be good to know sometimes.
I do know that we don't have as much participation as we would like on dependents, but that's okay sometimes as well, because, like I said, actuarially, we know that the more dependents that are on the plan, the risk goes higher for the plan. Believe it or not, the more spouses on the plan, the riskier the plan becomes.
Well, my concern is, we really have some of the best benefits, our city provides some of the best benefits everywhere, and I'm not sure that people understand how good the benefits are to come to work for the city.
I agree.
So, that is something that I'd like to, you know, promote and share. And I know you have done a good job of that, Ms. Hall, but we'd like to have healthy families and healthy employees, so.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, healthy or not, you can get Ozempic?
Well, you're supposed to be borderline type 2 diabetic, but there are ways that we have seen physicians in town prescribe Ozempic to people that are just overweight, without those numbers that would back up being a type 2 diabetic. So, it really comes down to the physician.
I just wondered if there was a rule or a cutoff, I mean...
You're borderline.
I'm borderlining trouble right now, but it's like Hollywood.
Yeah, you're getting there, Randy.
Speaking of that, I mean, I know someone that's on Ozempic. And I guess my comment of question is, they don't visit the doctors, a hospital, as much as they used to? So, with that decrease in gross medical claims, can that be related to medication working?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure about that, because what you've seen, anytime we can keep a large claim from happening, that's what you want to do. And that's where we have seen the biggest drop-off on our cost are the larger claims. Believe it or not, it's been cancer claims. And so, Ozempic is typically for diabetics. And so, I don't know if I could, and obviously, I'm not a physician, so I can't say that that's actually helped. But anytime you can lose 25 to 30 to 40 pounds, and also lower your A1Cs and your blood sugar and everything else, that's good for you. The trick is staying on it after you've gotten off of Ozempic and stay on a lifestyle that keeps you... and stay on a lifestyle that keeps you still at that weight level.
I mean, one or two patients fine, but if you have a large number, that, did you say how many was on Ozempic?
I'm going to, I'll, I'll tell you, it's 10% of your employee population right now.
Pretty good. Pretty good amount of people.
It's a good amount of people. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sure. Next page is your plan design. We propose no plan design changes this year, so no deductible increases or out-of-pocket increases or copays. So no increases to the plan design at all for the base plan or the buy-up plan. So everyone would stay the same there. And then on the recommended funding for the dental, this is something that is also, I believe, been very productive for employees, are productive for the city as far as being able to provide a very good benefit, but also generated some little bit of revenue. There's not a lot of risk in dental, because there's only, it only pays up to $1,500 maximum per person or it's on the plan. So there's not that big risk of that high, high claim out there. And so we're able to pretty, that's why we do it completely self-insured, because actuarially, actually in our firm, we have underwriters that actually work in our firm that give us the rates that we should be charging to make sure that, that we are staying inside the parameters, that we feel like that we are not going to lose money. And so the city is, is still contributing $30. This again rate has not changed in three or four years. Actually, it's gone down because of the contribution from the city. And you'll see that the current plan, the contributions from the city is around $116,000. That'll stay the same because it's based on that same formula. The actual contributions from the employees are very, very similar. They're the same from last year. So you'll see the contributions are right at $172,000, with, with estimated fixed costs and projected claims being $138,000. So there would be a surplus that would be added to that fund. So there, so not only could there be a surplus added to the medical fund and pharmacy fund, but also the dental fund as well, which all is, are mingled together. So nice news is the plan design did not change and the rates did not change there as well. And remember, last year, we also increased the benefit from $1,000 to $1,500. So we increased the benefit 50%. And so that's been, I think, probably very popular for people. We would like to see one more year of claims history and, and continue to try to increase that benefit, because everyone knows that 50% on orthodontics, $3,000 is not 50%. And you can't get braces for $3,000. Braces cost anywhere from $5,000 to $6,000. So we would love that number to start to increase from $1,500 to $2,000 to $2,500 and get that up to a level where it's a true 50% benefit. But it just takes a little bit of time. So then the summary page. The medical insurance, of course, keep 0% for employees, no changes there. There's what we were talking about, Chad, as far as where $50 a month for your spouse on the base plan, 75 for the children, and then 100 for the family with, again, no, no changes to the plan. Dental insurance, no changes for either rates or plan designs. Employer paid life insurance, this is something that, that the, the, the committee wanted to do, is to increase that amount from $20,000 to $50,000. And that, that cost is $13,308. So that will be something that would need to be voted on, because that is an increase to the, to the overall cost. The rates did not change per $1,000 of coverage. Obviously, the volume changed when you went from $20,000 to $50,000. But that would give every single person $50,000, which obviously I think is, is, is a lot better than $20,000. I remember employer paid life insur, or employer paid long-term disability was implemented last year. And then your voluntary term life and vision, there was no, no changes there. We actually were able to expand the network. That was one thing that throughout the year, we heard some complaints, that there were not enough physicians or facilities to, to go in the network for vision. So that was able to be expanded this year. So I think that's going to make some people happy there. And then also a recommendation is to move your voluntary accident, critical illness, hospital indemnity, and short-term disability from Aflac to Lincoln Financial. It's real difficult to compare. We did our best to compare what each one cost versus the coverages. And we found that in most instances, Lincoln Financial was a, a lot better in price and coverages. Now, the employees will have the option to keep that coverage if they would like to. It just would not be payroll deducted any longer, but they could keep it. But when we, when they go on their online enrollment system, they would have the option of, of choosing the coverages through Lincoln Financial. But they can keep it if they want to and do it on their own. So the next one is questions.
No, I, I don't have any question, but I'm just going to make another comment about Ozempic. Because my, my brother's on there because borderline diabetic.
Sure.
Now they come back and tell him he has to take Jordiunt, I think the name of it, in order to protect his heart from Ozempic. One of them is $900 and some dollars for 30 days. The other one was like $780 and some dollars for 30 days. So he's paying right at $1,700 medication. I don't know how long he has to take it, but expensive.
It's very expensive. That's one of the reasons why we do have, you'll see your office biz, or your prescription copays. It's not under the specialty drug copay. So they do have a copay that they have to pay as all instead of the full price, which really, really helps. I think that's why you're seeing 10% of your population on Ozempic, because they know they can just pay a copay and are able to take that medication.
And neither one of those have generic.
No, sir, they don't. That's one thing we wish they had.
Do they encourage generic here, or do they mostly just take the, the name brand?
You know, I think, I think when, when there is a, a, a generic available, you'll see especially pharmacies really, really good about offering that. I don't, I, I can't say as far as in the physician community, but I do know in the, in the pharmacy community, they're very, very good about offering generics. And, and I will say this, when we look at generics dispensing rates versus brand name dispensing rates, y'all are 85 to 87% generic dispensing rate, which the benchmark is 80%, which is excellent. And so the more generic dispensing you can do, the lower the cost of the plan. So we want to do that for sure.
So if Ozempic, because it's new, if it turned out to be some terrible thing that made people sicker than what they were, would the city be liable for that or anything?
No.
In five years or something?
It's, it's an FDA-approved drug, so no, you're, the city is not liable for anything. It's an FDA-approved drug that is on the Blue Cross Blue Shield formulary list. You're protected there for sure. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
So you mentioned just a little bit about what your role is with the city. Can you tell me just offhand what we pay for consulting with Cadence?
Sure. You pay $4,000 a month, $48,000 a year. I'll give you the, kind of the market value on that. The market value typically is $20 per employee per month, which if you have 300 employees, that's right at $6,000 a month. Plus the ancillary is typically a commission product. And so we do not have any commissions in any of the products, it's just a flat fee. So whether your claims are, go up or down, or your employee counts go up or down, we're not going to charge any more than that.
So you make no additional money based on our premiums, based on anything?
No, sir.
Okay, so on the other side, why should a city like the city of Nacogdoches be partially self-insured? What, why does that make sense in our case?
Good question. I'm giving you one example. So last year, your maximum cost for the plan was $3.7 million, right? Because we didn't have a very good year the year before. So you would have paid a fully insured rate of right at $3.7 million, maybe even a little more than the maximum. And over the last 12 months, you have paid, you have spent $2.6 million. That means Blue Cross would have only had to pay out 2.6 and you would have paid them 3.7. So you'd have lost $2.1 million on that particular, on that particular year. And this year, I promise they wouldn't have gone down to $2.6 million on a fully insured. They would have probably gone down to this $3.6 million and said, hey, we gave you $100,000 rate decrease. Aren't you happy?
Which would not have been advantageous.
Over the years, yes, no question about it. Your self-insured plan is better.
So we've had a few bad years in a row. Let's imagine for a second that this trend continues and we have a few good years. Does that put us in a, in a category where we still stay self-insured? Or should we consider going out into the open market?
Well, we're going to go out to the open market. Next year, we'll go out to the open market. We did not this year, we did last year. Every other year, we're going to go out to the open market and see both fully insured and self-insured to see what, what is better. It's, it's my job to do that, to make sure that you are in the best place, whether it's fully insured or self-insured. And you can always, you, you can bet on it that you're going to have a, a bad year every, every three or four years. You're going to have a bad year. But if you look at it over time, four or five-year period, it, with your size account, company, that you're going to come out better self-insured than you went fully insured, unless you were the most unlucky city in the world.
It seems like we've been not terribly fortunate and.
I would say you've been very, very fortunate and very, very great looking at your fund balance, especially over the last 10 years.
So on the other side, I, I want to discuss, I want to step out of the fiduciary role and step into the employee role for a second.
Okay.
We pay $725 a month for every employee we have, whether we fill the position or not. That's what we're doing to, to fund that.
Right.
So the employees that are having to pay for, the taxpayer pays that portion. On the other side, the, the employees are paying a premium if they add their children or their spouse, or they have their family.
Correct.
So when I, when I compare the numbers in my own personal healthcare plan, and I'm on TRS Active Care, be glad to share those numbers with anyone. We say that we have great benefits and I think that our insurance plan is, is good, but my out-of-pocket costs are significantly lower than someone that isn't employed by the city. So how, how do you respond to that? Why, why can't we do better or be a part of a cooperative like that?
You could, you mean, go out and try to solicit other cities to, to join?
Right.
You could. I mean, there's, there's cooperatives, it's very difficult to get cooperatives to participate, because what happens, you have to lock them down for many, many years. It's kind of like TRS Active Care. Once, once you're into TRS Active Care, you can't leave. Right? So if the city had a great year and you got a 15% increase, you're going, dang, I wish I was by myself. But you can't be, because you're, you're within a co-op. Just getting cities to do that in general is very difficult with all the claims experience and having each city council vote on something and all agree. It's like, it would be like having 20 attorneys in the room trying to agree on one thing.
No, cer- certainly I understand that, but from an employee's perspective.
Yeah, no, sure. Well, and I would say, I know the, I know the TRS Active Care plan very, very well. We've worked with school districts for, for many, many years. I've worked with Mr. Johnson on when he was on the, on the, on the, on the council there at the city, or for the school districts as well. And we actually, way back when TRS Active Care was formed, recommended to the city that they moved to TRS Active Care. So if anything ever did come about, just like TAC, Texas Association of Counties, and something came together like that, we would take a hard li, look at it and, and our job is to make that recommendation, whether it's something that the city should do or not. I know the city also has many different plan designs to, to offer as well. I mean, they have an HSA option that, that's a lot lower cost and a lot of people take it because it's the lowest cost plan. And then you look at some of the other plans and, and they're not near as good. So, and they're very expensive for the dependents out of, if you look at that as well. So it, it's just, it's so much different. It's so hard to really look at apples to apples. It's kind of like this, the county versus the city. Well, why are they paying $1,200 a month and we're going to pay less than 700? You know, just because of their claims history, more than anything. So their 300 people that they have versus the 300 people that we have, the claims history is just so much different.
Well, and, and I know in, in this role, I, I sit here and have that discussion. We have to make the decisions that are best for the city.
Sure.
But also we have 300 employees who want to, want to know why they're paying more than, than maybe they have to. And I, I think that's completely understandable. And we want to make sure that we're getting them the best plan that we can and being fiscally responsible to the taxpayers on the other side.
Yeah, I, I agree 100%. And, and I, I look at, we're blessed to have very many employers in town and out of town. And, and to know that we have gone five, now six years in a row without having to have any rate adjustments at all on a negative basis for the employees and still have a very, very good plan. And then add some of the ancillary coverages that we had, like disability and dental insurance, that there's very, very few companies out there that pay for dental insurance for their, for their employees. Very, very few. So when you, when you package it all together, and I think education, I think I heard, I think Ms. Landry, you talked about education. I think that's really, really important.
Yes, absolutely.
Do you need a motion from us or do we?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, is there any public comment on this? If there being none, okay, do we need a motion? Okay. So we're making a motion. Okay, what'd you say about the life insurance, Jeff?
Yeah, sure. Life insurance would go to from $20,000 to $50, and its additional $13,308. Now, that could change a little bit based on the number of people that come on and off the plan throughout the year. But based on the enrollment counts now, that would be the estimate.
So we'd be increasing our premium $13,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I move to approve the city's partially self-insured health plan and authorize the city manager to execute the renewals and contracts necessary for the 2023, 2024 fiscal year.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Council.
Okay. Next item. Receive a report from the Nacogdoches Communication Task Force, Public Information Officer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Kevin Meyer, Public Information Officer for City of Nacogdoches. Before we get into the report, I really want to thank the members of the Communications Task Force. We have several of them here today. One of them did just have to step out unfortunately, but want to thank them because this has been a long, long process. You know, that I kind of came in towards the tail end of, but they've been at this for a while and want to thank them for their time and dedication to this. And with that being said, I want to introduce to you Graham Garner. He's the Chair of the Task Force and he's going to make the presentation to you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm happy to be here and represent the Communications Task Force, which was officially formed in September of 2021. So we've been going for a while now. I think we have a list here. So there was overview, the task force's responsibilities and guiding principles as, as they were provided were to represent the community, to enhance the city's communication efforts, to review existing communication efforts and identify areas for improvement, to conduct research on communication efforts that include scope, cost, responsibility of effort, to provide guidance and prioritization because of the task force's expertise, which I'll speak to in just a moment, and then deliver conclusions and recommendations, which you should have in the report that's been provided to you, as I understand it. The char, so the charge of the task force was in fact to determine the existing communication structure and efforts, gather input from key communities, review and assess the findings, and then deliver conclusions and recommendations. The original task force members included myself. And then the others that you can read here, I want to particularly thank Alex for her work in, in writing up the report along with Chris Hancock and then other members who you can see here, some of whom became inactive later on in the stages because of different developments, in some cases joining the council. And I do want to thank the staff as well, Jessica Sowell in particular, who was with us through the, throughout this process. And Kevin, of course, in joining more recently. And we're grateful also for all the other staff members who spoke with us at different points during, during the work of the task forces that met, to ask a lot of questions and to, to learn more about communication efforts and to hear suggestions as well. We do offer some recommendations. These are the primary sections in the report, and I'm happy to speak further on any of these as the council or the mayor may desire. And, but I will just mention these as we go through these. The NACWIS system usage and frequency, this is a system that's primarily used to notify individuals about emergency situations. We talk about improvements to the city's communications during emergency situations. This was a large focus of the discussion of the task force. Much reference was made to, as some people call it, the snowpocalypse or snowmageddon or any other kind of extreme weather situations that the community has endured. Learning lessons from that, and it's very clear that the city worked very hard during that period. And this is of course within the, the pandemic as well. So a lot of lessons have been learned through those past experiences and learning how to apply those to future potential events. Number three was additional media outlet or partnership connections. Number four. Number four was promotion of NACWise and NAC 311. NAC 311 is the system that allows citizens to note improvement, perhaps it needs to be done in the community, maybe a pothole, an issue in the park, or a street, or, or something like that. Number five was the internal city communications and processes. And then number six was the city of NAC media channels, which would include YouTube and, as well as the, the cable channel. I think what, it would be fair to characterize the discussion that the, the task force had, both with amongst its members and with those staff members and others they spoke to. Interviews were conducted within various communities or stakeholder groups within the larger city. And I think that the sense is there are a, a vast array of tools that are available, that are appreciated and that are used. The challenge seems to be primarily in what resources, in primarily in the form of personnel that are available to help with that on the city side, and then awareness amongst the citizens and residents of, of those tools and how to use them. So, our recommendations, if I were to characterize them broadly, are to promote the tools amongst the residents and, and citizens so that they are aware of those tools and know how to use them. And then to make sure that the city is aware of the, the role that the Public Information Officer can play in communicating with larger public. It seems, as we have a number of discussions, that people are every bit as concerned about information as they are about actual response to incidents and, and performance. People want to know what's happening within the community. And then the absence of official communication from the city, people rely on things like social media groups and pages, which can be very helpful for people, but they also don't always have all of the official information. So, throughout the report, we talk about these official channels, as well as places where people are already present and active. Facebook is an example of that. But to make sure that, that everyone within the city is able to provide the information to the Public Information Officer as thoroughly and promptly as possible, so that they can make sure that the tools that are available are used to disseminate that information to the residents. And people are aware of what their city is doing to help serve them, and, and what, as well as what needs the city might have. So, with that characterization, there are some conclusions and final recommendations that are up in front of you here. The first is, the task force concludes and acknowledges that many of these recommendations will require additional funds to accomplish, and we encourage the City Public Information Officer to request the necessary funds to complete these tasks during the city budgeting process so that they are well equipped to meet these recommendations and move forward with their ongoing marketing and communications plans. Next is that this task force has also concluded that the City Public Information Officer should continue to be one of the first individuals contacted when emergencies or disasters occur. After viewing the incident command structure hierarchy provided to us, it is noted that the PIO is at the top right below the incident commander. And thi, this also noted that the structure is for incidents only. The PIO's position in the hierarchy changes back to normal for day to day communication. This is largely in reference to emergency situations, as FEMA directs, or, or other emergency response practices, NIMS, if you're familiar with that as well, which is the National Incident Management System, I believe, is what that stands for. And then finally, it's further recommended that the city council, city leadership, and all involved make communication a higher priority. It is easy to become so focused on the task we are doing, or the problem we are solving, that we lose sight of the need to let others know what we are doing, that what, that we care what they have to say and that they are heard. Better and more timely communication can solve many ills and help the city of NAC and its residents in the long run. And if I might just indulge for just a moment, my, my day job is the Chief Marketing Communications Officer for Stephen F. Austin State University. And we've had a number of things to deal with in, in the, in the two and a half years that I've worked there. Most recently, of course, is a cyber incident that we've been working through since June 12th. And while there might be a number of people who are directly affected by what's happened, it's clear that the very, the larger community has had a greater interest in understanding what happened and how we've worked through that. So, I think that even just this most recent timely incident that, that we've encountered demonstrates the importance of communicating to people what happened, what we're doing, how we're gonna fix it, how people can help, how people can be understanding. And so, I just wanna add that and thank everybody again on the task force and within the city and in the community who's, who have helped in this discussion. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Okay, first, let's do, is, is there any public comment? Okay, there being none, we'll open it for discussion. Chad?
I, I just wanna, first of all, thank the, thank the Communication Task Force. I, I know there are a few in here. Thank you for chairing it. Thank you, Alex and, and Chris for writing that report. I have a few questions, and I know that we've had some discussions in our meetings, and I've had some with Kevin about how we utilize our, our media channels. Can you summarize your findings and recommendations on the media, the social media and other media channels?
Certainly. I think the primary thing, the, the, the largest need right now, the most pressing need, is to make residents, the citizenry, the public at large, aware of what tools the city uses to communicate. So, that people are aware of them, that they can engage in them and use them. In the instance of social media, it's recognizing where the audiences already are and making it clear to them. For example, if Kevin is the PIO in the role, that Kevin can be present within those pages or within those groups, or the, and be able to communicate on behalf of the city, the information that needs to be relayed to the public. Oftentimes, that also includes responding to questions that people post and comments. And that can be a very intense job, and it doesn't relent. It's not an eight to five. It is a 24/7. People are on social media all the time, they post comments and questions all the time, and they expect a response immediately. So, helping to develop a way to support that kind of monitoring and response i, is an important thing to do, both in terms of social media, as well as the other tools that are available, such as NACWise and NAC 311. In instances of crisis or emergency, where something is ongoing, figuring out some kind of shift approach, so it is not all on the shoulders of one individual, to try and monitor all of the social media platforms, all of the other communication tools, and to respond. It's, it's an incredible amount of work just on a regular day to day when things are going well, let alone when there's an emergency.
So, I, one of the, one of the main things that I, I took away from reading it is building up our, our platform, particularly on, on our YouTube and on Channel 21. I know, I'm, I'm a habitual YouTube watcher when I'm doing other tasks. And, you know, whether it's that or Channel 21, I know people get tired of seeing the same city council meeting, and they get tired of not having fresh content. But I'll go do a deep dive in the city's YouTube page and see Jessica Sal talking about things from five or six years ago. And so, where is that today? That's, that's my question. How do we get to where we're, we have fresh things and we're sharing what's going on? Because there are great things that are happening here, but we have to be able to make that messaging known.
Um, so, I wanna apologize.
It's not that serious, you don't have to throw it.
Yeah, so, since I started in this role several months back, we've, we've started making some kinda plans. And that was one of the things that was initially mentioned to me, is, is increasing the presence on YouTube, Channel 21, things of that nature. So, part of that has been just kind of fact finding, gathering what's kinda, that's been used for in the past, and then just trying to figure out a plan moving forward to fill that with some content, whether that be a mix of, you know, PSAs and, and short form, things like that, to educate the public passively, or also some, you know, more creative content. So, my office has already kind of put together some, we have some packages coming out soon on some of the historic sites to fill some of that. And then I'm looking into some of the things in public domain, PSAs of that nature, that we can add to kinda fill that out as well. And then there's, you know, other planning for longer term, larger pieces. But again, that comes back to the need for additional funding, additional equipment, to make that sort of stuff a reality.
Well, I, I know personally, I, I wanna support your initiatives. And I also wanna say, if you need our help to leverage whatever influence we have on any of those platforms, sign me up, I wanna help.
Yes, and I've al, already began exploring some, some relationships I have with the Mass Communications Department at SFA. I have some other outlets to pursue with NACISD as well, and communicate with their people there to try and figure out how we can cross collaborate and utilize some of the resources available to us in this community. And, you know, grow those partnerships with SFA in our own backyard. So, things are in motion, and it will take a little bit of time to get going. But, you know, I know that there is a, this is a strong point of emphasis, and my office is ready to, to meet that head on.
You already have content, the, these meetings are taped, but I'm still watching the same one from two years ago or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. And actually, I, I just met yesterday with Michael, the Invisible Man in the Sky from RIT Department. It was a very great conversation. We had some talk about switching some things up and, you know, learning a little bit of the history first off of some of the things that have been done in the past, to fill some of the airwaves. And, you know, you know, he knows that I have some things coming down real soon to take out that old meeting from however many years ago it was, and start putting some new stuff on there. So, yeah.
I, I, I have just a follow up question. So, you've only been on the job since, when did you?
Since March 6th.
March 6th. So, some of these questions don't have to do with, you know, since you've come on the job. So, please don't feel like you should have accomplished everything in these, in these, just these few months. But just to follow up to both of your questions, what specifically do you need? What kind of funding and equipment? We're right here in this budget cycle, so I would like to know very specifically what.
Yeah, so, first and foremost, the lack of a suitable studio space to film something like, I know you guys had, I heard a conversation between you two the other day of kind of a, a sit down interview format show. Right now, there wouldn't be a good space anywhere in the city that I'm aware of to film something like that with the correct kind of sound, you know, aiding panels and what have you, or just a space that's free and open and could be set up as a studio. So, that would be something, appropriate lighting for something on the, of that nature. There might be additional equipment, maybe a different camera, so things of, of that nature.
You know, this is a perfect partnership with SFA, which just built a $57 million. I mean, the soundstage is probably, you know this, it's probably $2 million or so with lighting grids, people to film, all of that. So, rather than us spending all that money, maybe a partnership with SFA might be great on that.
I'm all for that. I don't want to spend any money that we don't need to spend. I think we can be, get our goals accomplished, but also being fiscally responsible and.
I think it could help them also.
Absolutely. So, I've had some of those discussions. I'd have more people to meet over there, certainly, to have more of those discussions and meetings to kinda figure out how we can cross collaborate. But the intention is definitely there from my side to do that.
I would encourage you to utilize the contacts that you have. Sometimes, just a sta, a staff person may not have all of the contacts as a city council person, or as the, you know, the, our, our chief officers, any of them, I'm looking around the room, including Chief Kiplinger. I still call you chief, so, you know, but, okay. So, I would use, you know, other contacts.
I'm sure Councilwoman Mal knows a guy.
And I'm sure Mr. Garner would be very happy to help get, get those accommodations. Any other funding or that you need other than those things?
I'm sure there are some things that are yet to be discovered, but I'm looking heavily into that because it has been ma, made clear that as a priority. So, I'm wading into that, and as I kind of do some more research, I'm sure there will be some things that'll come up. But I'll make sure you guys are known, know of those things, and that, you know, if you support that and want to go forward on those things, that it becomes known and that I can ask for, so.
I think it's known, you can ask.
I, I know a little bit about your background, and you've been here since March. Can you tell us what you did before you came to us?
So, before I, I moved here down to Nacogdoches six years ago, and I was to take a job at Stephen F. Austin Athletics to work as a Sports Information Director. So, that was more of the media relations side. Frankly, there's quite a lot of crossover in my job now to what I did there, setting up interviews, putting out press releases, updating the website, just general historical record, upkeeping, things like that. So, there was a lot of different hats that I wore there. One of the things that was always kind of taken that was somebody else's job there was video, but they've come a long way in terms of their, and as far as what they're doing on video side. But that was kinda my background and kinda how I, what led me to this, and some of the experience I bring to bear on that.
And, and that was kinda the point that I was trying to make. I knew all those things. I, I've been, I'm a huge SFA Athletics fan, as most people know. And so, I've seen the work that you've done, and that's why, when you came to the city, I was so excited because I know the skills that you're bringing. And when we're talking about video, I know that we're gonna get quality content. And so, just, I trust you 100%.
I won't let you down.
If you need things, come to us, we'll make it happen.
I just wanna speak on, for us elderly citizens that still have landlines. And one of the things that was recommended that the Public Information Office continued to develop a marketing plan to engage residents in these communication tools and educate them on the best way to sign up, et cetera. Lot of us, I mean, we don't even have a cellphone yet, and computers out of the question. Do we have any idea what percentage of residents that has not been communicated with, but, just like NACWise? Have not signed up for NACWise, per household, not individuals?
Per household, I don't know that we know that information. We know the total number of, of signups that we have in Nacogdoches compared to the population, which I believe is about 6,000, in a, a population that I believe exceeds 30. So, there's work to do on that, and certainly something that I want to increase, especially as that is the primary emergency communication method that we're gonna be relying on. And so, you know, NACWise is something that people can sign up on their cellphone or their home phone. They can also sign up multiple numbers, say that, or, this was something that came up, Mr. Hancock actually brought this up. He said he lives in a different part of town than he works at. And so, if we, one of the system, one of the features of, of NACWise is that we can geofence an area. So, if there's a localized incident that affects, say, Main Street, and Main Street alone, we can notify all the numbers in that area, draw out that area, and notify just those people. So, it doesn't, you know, necessarily ring all the other phones in the, in the, um, town. But he said, hey, if I'm traveling to work from the north side and my workplace is affected, how am I gonna get that call? Well, that's exactly why you can register multiple numbers, so that you can have it call your work phone at your office, or you can call your cellphone, and call both. So, you know, landlines are still something that we can access there. All the landlines at the rec center are, are hooked up, for example. So, when the one went out the other day about the crash on 59, we had about 30 phones ringing simultaneously, so that was fun. But it's something that, I understand that there are different demographics in this town, and there are different people that communicate in different ways. So, Councilwoman Belanger has mentioned to me that she has a fair amount of people that she knows that do not use Facebook. And that's the city's primary communication forum as far as the internet goes. And so, there are ways that we have to reach people that are not tied to Facebook. And so, that's one of the challenges that I've dealt with, even back when I was working in athletics. It was how do we engage with people across a variety of platforms? Because you can't just rely on just one to get the message across, so.
I've had a lot of friends drop off of Facebook. But one of the other items were to engage the younger demographics with the, within the community. How are we doing on that?
Yeah, so, we are, you know, we're, we have different methods. There's, there's some of the, Facebook is not something that a lot of younger people are using with the same regularity. You know, for me, I guess I'm not really young anymore. But when I was a little bit younger, Twitter was a primary news source for me. But Twitter's gone through a really rough patch. It's really fallen out of favor, as evidenced by, you know, I restarted the city Twitter shortly into my tenure here, and it has not really taken up off the ground. I do not think that it is a reliable method of communication in this town. Why that may be, I can't speak to that, cuz I can't get in the minds of every single person who decided they're not gonna sign up for it or, or follow us. But ongoing process, certainly with a lot of the younger population in town representing SFA students, I think some partnership with, with Graham's office and some of the things they're doing there can help reach some of that population, which obviously swells a lot during the school year. And just try and, you know, get the hooks in there with that young group.
Thank you.
So, we'll have further discussions on that about how to best reach that group.
I have some questions for Mr. Garner here.
That's all yours.
About the report. And this is, you know, because you all have been doing this for two years, and, and it's near and dear to my heart. In fact, I'm the one who requested it. So, one of my, one of the things that I was really, I wanted a little bit more in depth information was about the use of the Emergency Operations Center. So, can you fill me in on that, on the use of? So, can you fill me in on that, on the use of the Emergency Operations Center? Because you highlighted that in the report.
Yes. That was a conversation that we had. Thank you for the question, um, Councilwoman. We did have some discussion about that and there was some information shared with us. It does seem that a good share of that has to do with how that was originally funded and how, what was and was not able to be completed. Some of it has to do with location as well. Uh, I'll confess that I don't feel like that we have a full picture as a task force to be able to address that. But that was, uh, that was a significant point of conversation a number of times.
Did, did you conduct some of those interviews or?
No, no, me specifically, no. Uh, no, but we did have some discussions about that. And I, I, I apologize. I don't have notes specifically on that, but we did. It does seem to me that was part of earlier on, um, in the first half of the task force timeline, that we did have that conversation. Um, but I apologize. I just don't have more information.
Do you expect that you're going to look more into that to make sure that, you know, that everything is seamless? I think that's really the, the big.
May, may I ask if there, uh, if there's a more specific question there that I can try to address?
Well, I mean, if we have a, um, an, you know, an emergency operations center and actually, who, who are the people involved? What exactly is the process for emergency operations? How are all the communication channels? I think you talked about, about across county, across city. Uh, can you give me, I think you're the one who stated this.
Yeah. And I think that, that that's kind of where we weaved a little bit back and forth in this report between just regular communications that happen generally within the, within the city and then what happens in, in an, in a large incident or an emergency. Um, the latter is something that I don't think the task force felt completely qualified to really address. We raised questions of that amongst staff who are involved with emergency management.
Chief, if I'm not mistaken, we had some conversation with you as well on that topic. Um, we truly tried to say more in the area of just the, the, the general day-to-day and what public was looking for, for information. And I don't believe that the EOC plays a role in communicating with the general public. That is more, as I understood it, as we understood that, communicating amongst those who are the respondents or the responders to an incident. Is that accurate?
Okay. But, uh, um, I think, well, whatever. I think it would be helpful to really have that real, real clear and lined out. And I don't know if you're saying it's not your responsibility. Maybe, I, I don't know who's, who's. But you brought it up in the report, so I was.
I have been involved with emergency response, uh, in my role at SFA and other institutions as well. So, I, I do have a, a, an understanding of it. And I would, I think your question is an appropriate one. I don't believe it's one that a citizen task force is capable of addressing because it is something that is primarily used by professionals responding to an emergency situation.
I'm sorry. I just saw it in your, in your report and in your recommendations. Also, who's the Communication Department? Other members of the Communication Department? You all talk about that.
I think that's a reference to, I don't know if the Communication Department is just Kevin at this point.
Well, it says the Public Information Officer and other members.
Yes. And I think that that was, when we discussed that, it was more in lines of recognizing the others who might work along, whether they are officially or unofficially assigned to work with the, the Public Information Officer or that might be future hires.
I will say for the first couple, several months of my role, I have taken a lot of, bounced a lot of things off Jessica Self because she was acting as the PIO before. So, it, while, yes, I am the lone communications person technically, I rely a lot on her knowledge, um, and experience in this role, um, in the, in the time being. So, that goes probably to you.
So, you're all a department. That's okay.
Yeah. We just like to help each other out.
It's like when people talk at SFA about our social media team. We really only have one person who's assigned to it, but other people contribute as, as they are able to and can help.
I have more questions, but I'll wait for other people to ask, uh, some.
I have one. Um, I was on that committee and at the time, just as a citizen taxpayer, I would ask, like, everybody thought if we could just get a Public Information Officer, life will be good. But now, life is good. We're glad you're here. But you need additional staff and help, like you were saying, twenty-four hours a day. Was that brought up? That it was going to become a pyramid or whichever way it goes?
Madam, count, excuse me, Mr. Councilman, I believe that what the discussion was that we had on that topic was recognizing that this is something, communication is something that just continually evolves. And, uh, most immediately, there was that need for that Public Information Officer. We recognize that there are a variety of tools and resources available. Social media that's been referenced, uh, NACWISE, NAC three-one-one. Uh, but having someone who can wrangle and organize all of those, uh, those tools and those resources is a significant step forward. Uh, I think whatever the expectations are of the council and of the community have to be matched to the resources that are, uh, that are, we are able to commit. So, if, for instance, the, the step forward with the Public Information Officer is, is the resource that can be committed at this time, then the expectations for that person's role and the resources that currently exist have to, have to match that. If the expectation is that people ought to be able to post a comment anytime and get a timely response or be able to use any of their communication tools and expect a response within, within the hour, then the, the resources are going to have to be reevaluated or reallocated, whether that's new ones or, or existing ones. So, I think that that was just the nature of the ongoing conversation is, we know that at least the next step would be to add a Public Information Officer and that, that has been done by the city. That's, that's excellent. Um, and as you can tell, he's already begun some good work and will do more work as, as, as has been mentioned. He will contribute significantly in advancing the communication that happens within the city. Uh, but I can tell you as a communications professional myself, that never goes away. When they invented social media, when we started with Facebook, you had to have someone do Facebook. Then it was Twitter. Then it was Instagram and Threads and YouTube and so on and so forth. So, just as the communications technology expands and evolves, so does the expectation of, of the community to have, to be able to use those tools and to get responses and get information. So, the recommendation here centers around what exists right now and use the resources that exist, use the personnel who exist and include, in this case, him, in these processes of how do we communicate information? How do we make communication as important as responding to an incident itself?
So, have we created another department?
I can't answer that for you, sir. Sorry.
Can you, Kevin?
The Department of what?
Of Communications.
Uh, currently, no. We just have, uh, me and myself and I. And, uh, that's fine. I think that within the realms of what I've been tasked to do, um, I'm sufficient in that role. Um, it's very much the same way that I, same thing I dealt with in the previous experience at SFA Athletics is, um, you know, as you get to larger and larger entities, you see higher and higher demands, but you also see higher and higher personnel. So, you just have to recognize where you are, excuse me, in terms of the size of your organization and meet your expectations to the personnel that you have. Um, because as he was mentioning, there is, has been a lot of, um, uh, slow creep into more and more things where, you know, when Facebook became big, you had to have somebody could do, do that. And the rise of social media and it's kind of these roles and they just kind of kept shoveling things under, under the communications tab. So, um, the more and more you want to do with some of those areas, the more you want to specialize some of that, then you get into the realm of needing potentially to look at adding additional personnel, adding additional resources.
When did you say you were hired, sir? March of this year?
Yes.
You've done more in three months than most people could have done in a long time. It's going to take a while to get this done and get it right. And people are going to have to be patient. I, I know they want instant news, but he's one person and, and he, he, he can only do so much. He's building it. It will come, you know?
And I, I relish the challenge. I mean, this is something that I found myself in at athletics. Towards the end there, I was a one-man shop after initially moving down here and being one of three. So, um, towards the end, I got used to juggling a lot of these different things at the same time. And I do relish the challenge and I want to, I want to improve, um, what was there and meet the expectations set out for me for this role. So, it will take a little bit of time, but if you, uh, give me that time, I will, I will definitely rise to the challenge.
So, okay. Any more questions?
I still have, I'm so sorry, Mayor. I have a few. So, um, I just want to summarize a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank all of the volunteers. These questions, you know, particularly Alex and, and Chris, I guess, because you formulated the report and, and you for helping and you, of course, Mr. Garner. And, um, I, I, but I, there are a couple of things that I'd really want to hone in on. Um, first, um, I hope we do get better at notifying all of us in the city instead of just in these geographic regions because I, you know, we, we, we're a small city. We, we're not very large geographically. And so, what impacts somebody over in, uh, Kenbrook will im- impact me. I mean, we drive around the city all day long. So, keep, if you keep that in mind. And then also to, to get the information. I don't know how many steps we've got. So, sometimes when we add a person, it actually adds a step instead of taking away. So, I'm sure you'll, you'll work through the bureaucracy so that the notification can get out really fast, like immediately. And I know that's hard. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's actually, uh, one of the questions that I was going to ask. What is your process for getting a press release out?
Uh, so typically the, um, are you talking purely emergency situation or just in general?
Let, let's, let's talk through both and, and what's the approval process? It comes to you. How does it get, get sent out or posted, whatever? What's the process?
So, I'll get notified. Say it's a non-emergency situation. Say it's a water line break. Um, you know, the appropriate person and it might be, uh, Jason Smith who was here earlier, or it might be Case or Steve, um, with engineering. They'll notify me of, you know, what, what occurred and where. And, and, um, they'll typically, uh, send me a prepackaged kind of a release already to go with all the relevant information in. And that's a time-saving measure so that, you know, it's already there and I can immediately disperse that out to the, to the people who need to know, disperse it out to the community via, uh, Facebook and the other channels and email, what have you. Um, and so, that's the process where it goes. And then obviously, including that is a kind of a timetable for when services could be expected to resume. Um, that's for a non-emergency situation. Um, emergency situation, the, the, the format, excuse me, um, has the incident commander, which would be, um, you know, fire PD chief. Um, and then it's, the PIO is kind of branched off to that. So, that's the first contact. Uh, and then down, you know, kind of a web structure after that. So, um, thankfully, we haven't had a lot of those situations. Um, but, uh, for the flood, um, for example, that was pretty early on my tenure here. Um, you know, I was informed and then, you know, Jessica helped guide me through, you know, hey, this is what we need to do. And we immediately went over to the temporary EOC that we set up at the police, police station and kind of went through our processes as far as, uh, yeah, that'd be great. Uh, went through our temporary processes or, sorry. Our processes to disseminate that information, get the NACWISE call out, um, and, and, uh, notify all the necessary parties and continue to notify the public of changes throughout the day.
You had a water line break on North Street the other day and I got that immediately. So.
So, you don't have, do you have to go to the city manager before you send those things out? Or you just are authorized to send press releases out?
Uh, I am authorized, but there are, there are people on the way. I'm not in a vacuum just sending it out on my own. Um, you know, it touches various staff along the way. Um, and, um, you know, speak to the level of trust in, in his personnel. But, um, you know, I'm assuming that if it comes from, uh, veteran staff that have been here for a while, that I know that it's, uh, good and accurate and can go out as needed.
So, how long does it take?
Well, provided that, uh, my job has me, um, at my computer at my desk at that point, um, it can take very little time whatsoever. So, that water line break, I got the email notification from, uh, Jason that it was going on and it took me about, um, five, ten minutes to kind of create the necessary, uh, image and, and, and Facebook post and, and send that out. Post that on Facebook and then send that out to notify you guys as well. Um.
What about four AM?
Four AM? A little bit longer, but not, I mean, I, I understand that there, if there's something going on at four AM and I'm getting notified of it, it's probably something that's pretty, um, uh, what's it called? Pretty timely. Needs to be done, uh, uh, quickly and get out. So, um, again, luckily, we haven't had that occur yet in my first couple of months, but, um.
We had the water, the floods.
Well, yes. That was, I, I mean, in the terms of a normal water line break or anything, we haven't had that happen at four AM. Then it's something that needs to go out immediately. So, the floods, um, you know, we have, we know that that was, the information could have gone out faster and sooner. And that was something that we talked about with the Communications Task Force. Some of them shared.
If I could answer that. You'll recall that Chief Self, our emergency management coordinator, came and presented to the council, uh, several weeks ago along with, uh, along with some others, talking about that emergency notification procedure. Uh, council gave us some direction with regard to that. And subsequent to that, Chief Brown and Chief Self and the Communication, uh, Director, Michelle, uh, and they all got together and, uh, came up with a standard for four AM uh, for that emergent notification. Uh, and so, the police lieutenant on duty, uh, which is the police shift commander or the fire battalion chief on duty, either one can authorize a citywide NACWISE alert. Um, and those processes just had not been established. Uh, subsequent to the flood and to our meeting that followed the flood, we've made those necessary changes. And so, uh, the dispatch would be the actual people doing it. Uh, but the, but the police shift commander or the fire shift commander can make that decision. And there are people that are here at four AM awake and doing their job. You don't want to call me at four AM and ask me to make that decision because I don't know where I am.
And does he get to sleep later? Does he have to come?
No, probably not. He's probably going to get called in, but we'll give him thirty minutes to get to the office. How's that? Okay.
Thank you for, for following up on that. Clarify.
So, that kind of brings me to another question. I, I know your office is in the rec center, right?
Correct.
So, in that situation, where is the office? Where is coming into the office? That's really a question for you because that's, it's not going to be your typical operating scenario.
So, so when we have a, a, a large scale or a long duration incident of really any kind, there may be, the incident command center, the emergency operations center may be on the scene. Uh, it may be being operated out of our vehicles. Uh, it may be being operated on the wifi at Starbucks, depending on the nature of the emergency or the disaster. If something's going to go longer than one operational period, then generally, we will set up the emergency operations center. So, assume twelve hours. Um, if we're going to have something going on more than twelve hours, we'll set up the emergency operations center in a fixed location and the incident commanders will remain on the scene running the incident. But the emergency operations center's role is really to provide logistical support and public information and those kind of things.
So, so is it added that center over by where the, off the loop or is it?
So, we can, we can, we can operate it any number of ways. Most traditionally, we have used the Police Department Training Room uh, because of its location right next to dispatch, which makes it particularly useful. Um, it's also in a really good spot. We can use, uh, we can use that emergency operations center facility out at the racetrack. And what we have traditionally done with that is if something's going to be a really long duration, like a hurricane and a hurricane recovery, then we'll, we'll migrate from one to the other. It's much like the way we do sheltering. You know, we open the rec center first and then we open another facility second and we open. And so, we can scale up and scale back down as the, as the situation necessitates. Sometimes I'm more effective sitting in the fire chief's office, running the incident, than I would be sitting on my laptop at the police station. And so, uh, we just, we have to be, have that flexibility.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you.
So, so, uh, my summary for my concerns are that, um, there are a lot of things brought up, things I just didn't even know about too, that we, we need to be concerned about. And, um, I noticed that it said, that the report talks about reviewing this yearly. I would really, um, my background is evaluation. I like measurable objectives, timeframes, you know, getting, I'd like this parceled out into what we're going to do and who's going to do which and possibly see the progress quarterly. I mean, this is, this is a huge, uh, huge issue for all of us because all of our constituents ask us, why didn't we know this? Or how can I know this better? I'm particularly concerned, um, with the people in Independence Manor and some of the other constituents in my ward. But, um, because they really do have, uh, challenges and communication is, can be life or death to them. And so, um, that's why we're so concerned. I'm hoping that maybe i- in three months, I think that puts us where, October, that we can have an update. And then also, um, instead of noting, well, we have a lot of challenges and we need to think about how to go about it, uh, you know, really have a specific plan. It doesn't have to be planned for everything, but just so we can see what we need. And then my other thing is if we need to put something in the budget right now, um, um, I, I hope we do so that we can encourage it. That's just me.
I I agree with that. Uh, you know, I I think about the the constituents in my ward. You know, there are a few that are emailing and texting and calling on a regular basis. But there, you know, in my ward, there are 300 people that vote in a city election, but there's 4,000 people that live in the ward, 4,000 voters. And there are even more people that are not registered or aren't of the age to be registered. So in the wards that are not the most communicative or easily accessed, we need to be very focused on how we can can reach those those landline users. So just putting that out there that I that I agree with your points.
And if you need to keep the task force, maybe hone it down to just four or five people who could support you, that might be useful. You know, the people particularly who came regularly and who were most involved. I think that would be a real, uh, benefit if they would stick with it, but I don't know. But but thank, this is no means any kind of, you know, a thank you for all your work and your and all the task force. We really appreciate everybody's.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay, all right. Okay, that that was not an action item, Rod.
Mayor, could we, uh, have a five-minute recess, please?
Sure. Okay, we'll take a five-minute. Back in session. Uh, item C, receive a presentation and hold a discussion with the Chamber of Commerce regarding I-69 Economic Development and Infrastructure. Mr. Mitchell is on vacation. I knew it and I should have caught it whenever, uh, I saw it on the agenda. He called and apologized today, but we'll move him to, uh, one of the August meetings. Yeah. So, any discussion? None? Okay, all right. We'll go to D. Uh, consider approval of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 1929-09-22 appropriating various amounts in accordance with the budget adopted for the ensuing fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022 and ending September 30th, 2023 for the reallocation of ARPA funds. Mr. Bartlett.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works. Um, as you recall, several months ago, we, and actually we've talked about this twice. We looked at how we were gonna utilize our ARPA funds, which are a little over 8.1 million dollars. Uh, that's, uh, was reimbursement to us, uh, for time and materials during COVID. Uh, that's cash money in the bank. And so we talked about a distribution. See if I've got that coming up. That was just that one slide, sorry. So in in your package, you'll see exactly how we had divided that out for storm drainage, 1.4 million. Water system work, 3 million. Wastewater sewer work, 1.87 million. Fire station repairs, 800,000. Park restroom, 70,000. Architect and engineering fees, 740,000. And our grants consultant contract was 281,000. We're coming to you tonight to see if we can change that order a little bit. As you know, we've had some significant storm drainage failures lately, uh, several of which are literally in the urgent and emergency category. Uh, one of those under First Christian Church in Logan Support area, we'd like to move forward with an emergency repair there. Our early estimates are about three quarters of a million dollars from the contractor. So what we're proposing to do is basically reallocate what we had 3 million in the water. We'd like to move 1.5 million of that over to storm drainage. So that'll give us the 1.4 plus 1.5 or 2.9 in storm drainage. That'll give us access to some some more funds to do this. Uh, we'll still have one and a half million left in water and we're gonna try to pursue some of our water quality issues, circulation, chlorine, ammonia problems with that and develop some scope. But because storm drainage is in general fund and the water is in a utility fund, we have to come to you for a budget amendment to do that, as well as the fact we had all agreed, of course, on how to distribute that. So that's our request tonight, is to allow us to reallocate through a budget amendment, 1.5 million from the water category to the storm drainage category. And I'll be happy to answer your questions after public comment.
Okay, any public comment? There being none. Mr. Bartlett, so you're using ARPA funds?
This is all ARPA funds. Yes, all cash.
Okay. I have no questions.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
Okay, um, I move that we approve, um, item D as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Uh, receiver, uh, item E, receive a report and hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding your 2022-23 budgeted revenues and expenditures as of June 30, 2023 and the your 2023-2024 budget. This is Carbo.
Mayor, Council, Count Carbo, Director of Finance. Um, tonight, we're gonna take a look at where we stand in the current, um, budget year as of, um, 6:30. So we're basically three quarters of the way through the year. And so what we're gonna go over tonight mostly is our revenues, um, because historically, our expenditures for each department stay within their, they're such tight budgets anyway. They they stay really, really close to where they're supposed to be. We're gonna talk about a couple of departments that that may have some some issues with with their expenditures. But for the most part, we're gonna talk about, um, revenues tonight. We're gonna do our major funds. We're gonna start with the general fund. So of course, you'll recall that our main categories in revenues for the general fund are mostly taxes and franchise fees. Um, property taxes, as of 9:30, we have collected 10.7 million dollars, which is right at 100% of our, um, our property taxes for the year. So we are sitting really, really well, um, for property taxes. We'll have a few more, uh, deposits come in over the next few months, but it's mostly, uh, delinquent taxes from prior years. Sales tax, um, are doing really, really, really well still. Um, I I always get a little bit nervous when we start talking about sales tax because, uh, you know, with with the economy the way it is, at some point, um, we do anticipate seeing some sales tax declines over time. Um, right now, of course, with the with the inflation the way it is, we know that that part of our sales tax revenues are are increased because of the inflation. Um, and so at some point, we will see some some decreasing, but right now we are, uh, we are banking some good money. So as of, um, nine, uh, at 6:30, we're at 85%, so we're over about 10% over where we should be, um, for a sales tax. I anticipate if the next two months come in flat, even if we don't lose or gain anything, we should pick up probably 800, 850,000 dollars worth of of money to the general fund reserves just from sales tax. So, um, that is a very, very positive thing for us. Um, as we go through the the 23-24 budget, we'll be talking to you all about, um, our our revenue anticipation for next year. Um, and y'all understand I'm very conservative with sales tax only because we have no control over sales tax. Uh, we set the rates for property tax, so we know exactly what we're gonna get. Sales tax is, we're at the mercy of of the citizenry and and what they what they spend and the people that come to town and and what's bought at Walmart. So, uh, we're, we're gonna have a little discussion on that. We will pick up some additional revenues. But, um, as of as of this year, we're doing very, very, very well. Um, franchise fees, um, that, when you look at, we're at 30% for for three quarters of the year, you get a little nervous, but do not because Encore pays their electric franchise once a year on July 31st. And so until July the 31st, we really don't know how franchise fees are working for the year. I will tell you, all of the other franchises, cable, communications, gas, um, they are telecom, they are all up uh, with the exception of cable. Cable is down a little bit, um, this year. Gas is up and like I said, electricity will know something on July the 31st as to as to where we are. The last several years, electricity has gone down slightly every year, with the exception of last year. Last year, we were kind of flat. So we're, we're hopeful that we are able to at least meet budget, um, this year. We will know that by the time we meet again on July, I mean, August 1st. So we're, we're okay with where we are on 30% on franchise fees. Court fines, we're at 79%. So as far as where we should be mid-year, we're okay. That's comparing it to what we've budgeted. Keep in mind, every year, we've had to reduce the budget of court fines because we are, we are collecting less and less and less court fines over over time. Um, 10 years ago, court fines were over a million dollars a year. And so it is gradually decreased over time. So we will make budget this year, um, and I think, um, probably we'll be able to at least budget flat next year, but we're not gonna be able to pick up, uh, any significant amount of of court fines for next year. Um, other revenues, which is, this is your charges for fees, like the rec center, your cemetery plot sales, inspection, building permits, those types of things. And of course, interest, which has been phenomenal, um, for us, and that, of course, is all due to the economy. So whereas two years ago, we had 0.07% interest and we're, we're working around 5% right now. So we are, we are banking some money because we have some pretty significant cash reserves right now. So we are making a good bit on, um, interest. So we're at 94% of budget on our other revenues. Um, the next item is gonna look very odd with 21,000 or 2100% of grants. But keep in mind, this is fire deployments. And so last year, we had 1.1 million dollars worth of reimbursements for fire deployments, which sounds great, except you have 1.1 million dollars worth of fire expenditures that go with that. So, uh, the good thing about that is, is we get 100% of our money back. And so, um, it's, there's no detriment to the bottom line. Um, it just makes it look like we're, we're loaded with grants and that's truly not the case. We have had, um, you know, overtime expenditures have been, uh, through the roof because of the deployment. So those, those kind of wash each other out. Um, the other thing besides the fire deployments, um, the COVID vaccine clinic that our our firemen were, um, part of, that was about 267,000 that has come in this year reimbursing for those, and those were in prior year expenditures. And of course, our interfund transfers are at 77%. That's a budgeted thing, um, that are monthly transfers. So they're right where they're supposed to be as well. Um, when you compare general fund revenues, um, to where we were last year, you'll see that this is the first time in a long time that I have been able to stand up here and everything is green because we've had no drops year over year in any of our significant, um, sale, uh, taxes and fees in the general fund. Um, most of course is is interest earnings because we're at $370,000 in interest earnings in the general fund over this time last year. Before we jump to the utility fund, I do want, I don't have a s- a slide for expenditures, but I do want to tell you that, um, in the general fund, all of our departments are within their, um, expectation of this point in the year, which is about 75%. With the exception of our legal department, of course, that is because we had the payout, um, for for the, um, contract on the attorney. Um, and so we will be bringing a, um, budget amendment to y'all for that because that department is sitting currently at 151% of their budget. So that will be coming. Um, there's another couple of departments that had, they're right at 80% and those also are for payouts, planning and zoning and, um, I believe, but building maintenance. And they've had some, uh, employees that have left as well. And so, um, but as far as every other department, they're within their 75% or lower. Um, so expenditures are running right where they should be at this point during the year. So when we look at utility and sanitation funds revenues, um, of course, this is mostly water, sewer and sanitation here. Um, the water sales, we're at 72% through June the 30th. Let me look and see if I got that. No, I don't have it. So last year, at this point, um, we were at 75%. So we're down a little bit, um, in water sales. Sewer sales were at 71% and we were at 73 this time last year. And so this, of course, we're going into the time when we we do most of our water and sewer billing. And so, um, we'll see the the August and September numbers, which will be for July and August, um, actual usage. And so we will see, that's our our two largest months during the year. But I do not anticipate that we have a trouble, um, actually making, um, budget on water. I know sewer, sometimes sewer is a, is a, is 2% or 3% under, um, what we had budgeted. But it looks like we we may get close to actually making budget for water and sewer this year. A lot of that just just depends on on usage and and rain patterns. And, you know, we've had several wet years in a row. And so we've, we've struggled to make budget for a few years. So hopefully this year, um, we we get closer. On sanitation fees, these are the, these are the fees that are on the water bill as opposed to the to the landfill fees. Um, we're at 76%. Last year, we were 77. So we're, we're rocking right along where we should be. Um, sanitation fuel charges, 85%. Last year, we were at 125, but that was because fuel prices. That 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 fuel charge is tied directly to how much we pay for for diesel for the sanitation trucks. We just take it and we split it. Um, and so it's a direct pass-through to to the customers and there's no markup on that. Uh, and then, of course, the landfill gate fees, we're at 88% of budget. Last year, we were at about 93%. So our landfill's doing, doing very well as well. Um, on expenditures, all the departments are within their their 75%. And so I don't anticipate us having issue, any issues with with sanitation, I mean, with, uh, utility or sanitation departments, um, you know, having issues with their budget. Um, airport FBO, this is the fuel cells at the airport. They have been doing very, very, very well this year, that 97% of of budget. Um, and so, of course, there is an increase in the expenditure side because we have to buy the fuel that we sell. So we've bought more fuel this year than we anticipated, but we've also sold it. And so, um, the airport is doing very well. This is probably the first year in I can remember, I guess it's, I don't know how long we've had the FBO, 18, 17, 18 years, that the airport is completely sufficiently funding itself this year. And so normally, the utility fund and the general fund has to, has to transfer money over there to keep it, um, going. And right now, the fuel cells are are making that, uh, unnecessary. So that's a great thing. We are up about 16% over prior year, um, for fuel cells out of the airport. So very, very good news at the airport. Um, hotel tax fund, good news continues. We're at 90, 94% of budget on hotel taxes. Um, a little bit of this is a little bit skewed because we had a couple of hotels that, um, had gotten severely past due. They went into bankruptcy. Some of them went into, and they've, they've been, most of them, I think both of them have sold. And we have new, um, owners now and they are actually remitting. And so, um, a little bit of this is is due to the fact that we were collecting in the current year for taxes that were owed in a prior year. But still, we are doing very well. We're about 11% um, over where we were at this point last year. Um, and then overall, 25% of about $155,000. So hotel tax fund is doing, doing very, very well as well. Um, and then, of course, there's the only expenditures in the hotel tax fund, of course, are what we use to support the, um, uh, Expo Center. And then 72.5% of those go to the CBB. So however much we bring in in revenue, it's tied directly to to the CBB expenditures. And so, um, expenditures are doing fine and the hotel tax fund as well. So that is where we are, June 30th. Um, before we jump into the new budget, if we have any questions on that, I would be happy to answer those now.
I've got one question.
Uh-huh.
Would you go back to that sales tax, that first item, I think? Pro, uh, sales tax?
Uh-huh.
Okay, you're at 6.5 million dollars. Okay, that's through June the 30th. So you anticipate that being probably around eight million?
It's gonna be about eight and a half.
Eight and a half million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If if we're whole flat the next two months, it'll be about eight and a half.
If 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 you had that 1% back that is given to the hospital district, how much would that add to that sales tax figure?
Well, well, this this sales tax is based on 1%. So we're gonna, that would, if we had the whole penny and we had two cents, then our sales tax, our, um, we budgeted like 7.6. So I think, well, like I said, I think we'll hit close to eight and a half. Then that that's twice that much. Because ours, ours tax is based on one cent.
Okay. I know we're talking about spilt milk, but I just want people to understand that our sales tax would be double if we weren't supporting, uh, a hospital district. That's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. And it is.
It's a lot of money that would go a long way on drainage that's caving in. It would go a long way on a lot of stuff. And and I'm, I harp on this and I harp on it and I harp on it and I wanna keep on. I want people in this town to understand, you know, that we made a decision back in 1993 and it was voted on. That was a long time ago. But everybody needs to be aware that, are you getting the, are, are, you're sacrificing that 1% going to that hospital district that is now only a hospital district. It's not even a hospital anymore. I'm through with my speech on that. I just wanted people to recognize that that figure, which you say is gonna be about eight and a half million dollars. If we had that one cent back, would turn into 16 million dollars in sales tax that would go into this city.
And and most cities use that for economic development. They'll, they'll, you know, a half penny or a quarter of a penny, um, you can do it for property tax relief. There's, there's uses for that sales tax. So yes, you're, you're correct. There, there's, there's things that we could do if if we did have that, yes. Any other questions?
Just for me. That's my speech for the night.
All right. Um, so as far as the 23-24. So as far as the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we don't really have anything prepared to talk to you tonight about. We just wanted to have a conversation if there was anything over the last couple of weeks as, as we've talked about personnel issues or capital. If there's anything that y'all have thought about, that y'all want to, to discuss tonight or give me any direction. If not, that's fine too. But it's just an opportunity for, for y'all to give us some feedback on the, on the, the budget that we'll be presenting on August the first, if there is anything.
One, I forgot to ask for public comment.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. Any public comment? Okay, wait, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so like I said, if y'all have anything that y'all want to discuss, if y'all want to discuss timing of additional workshops, anything that has kind of been brought forward. If y'all have anything tonight, this is an opportunity. We just didn't want to not have an opportunity to talk about the, the, the new budget, if you wanted.
Any questions?
I, I don't have any. I'm eager to see the new proposal.
Two weeks.
So are you feeling confident about getting values on time?
Yes, I think we'll get values on time. Jason has, has committed to, to giving us a value. What he's going to have to struggle with is certifying an estimate. And so state law allows him to do that as long as he, he certifies within, I think, five percent. As we talked about tonight, the property taxes, we're at a hundred percent already. So what that means is that the numbers that we got, the certified estimate, July twenty-fifth last year, were actually a little bit lower than what was actually the taxable value at the date of levy. And so we're actually going to collect a little bit more because his estimate was a little bit low. And so what he has to do is he has to look at the value that's on the books at July twenty-fifth and then also look and see how many people have filed for ARB hearings. And all of those that, your entire value that's in, you know, it's, that's up for, for a hearing, he has to back that out. And so he has to look at historical data to say, how much do they, do we normally lose in a hearing? Is it three percent, four percent? And then he holds that out. If we don't use, lose all that value, it gets added back in at levy and we get more money than we anticipated. And so thankfully, most years, it's, it's been that way. They, they hold out enough that once the levy comes in, we actually get a little bit more money than we anticipated. The danger of doing those estimates is that they also could go the opposite direction. If, if they, if we lose a lot of value in those hearings and the actual taxable value comes in less than the estimate in July. We've built our budget based on, let's say, ten point seven million and maybe we only brought in ten point six. And so that's where those estimates become very important. Yes, I think we'll get an estimate. It's how, how close is that going to be to what we actually see next year at levy?
When, when does a hearing have to be settled?
So the, the hearings will be happening after July twenty-fifth. So they have to give us those values and they're still in the process of hearing. The, the state legislature last year, year before, whenever it was, changed the rules on that. And so historically, what the appraisal district has done is if, if, let's just say I have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house and I want to file a dispute, a hearing. And then Jan owns a twenty million dollar apartment complex. And she wants to file. Historically, they would go through and they would do the hearings for those first because that's where you, you lose significant value and they need to know what that value is going to be before they, they tell their entities how much your, your taxable value is. But the state says, no, we want the taxpayer to know first before the individual, before the, the, the businesses. And so now they have to do it in the reverse order. So now they, they go in and they do all the smaller valued things first. So what happens is that July twenty-fifth, they may have seen, you know, fifty or sixty percent of the homeowners, but they may not have seen any of the big businesses. And so that's kind of, that's what's scary for, for the appraisal district is giving us estimates because they really don't know where those, those hearings are going to land on the big items. And in the past, they knew that because they, they had those done, you know, in July, not in August. And so that's, that's another thing that I'm, I'm glad I'm not Jason. He's, he's, he's got a bad job right now, so. Anything else?
Any other questions? Okay. That's not an action item. Thank you, Pam, very much. Okay, next item, item F. Consider approval of resolution number thirteen forty-five dash oh seven dash two-three, creating a chapter three eighty economic development program and authorizing the agreement by and between the City of Nacogdoches and Dennis White regarding the renovation of a building at four oh one East Main Street known as the MC Hazel Building.
Counsel, Larissa Philpott, your Economic Development Director. We are here tonight to consider, as, as the mayor just said, a three-eighty agreement for the MC Hazel Building. This building was built in nineteen oh one, originally as the Hazel Department Store, I believe. You all probably know this history better than I do. It was also the McLean's Men's Wear Building and I believe a jewelry store at one point. So it's got a pretty storied history. The building's a little, is, is a little less than eight thousand square feet. It has been vacant as long as I've lived in Nacogdoches, so at least twenty, twenty-plus years. Mr. White purchased the building a couple of years ago and does have plans and has submitted plans to the city to renovate it as an office space for his son Calvin White's engineering firm. A retail space, a loft space upstairs, and then also an event space upstairs. It should be quite a beautiful building when he's done with that renovation. He is requesting an eight dollar square foot rebate after he receives his certificate of occupancy. This is the exact same agreement, if you remember, that Kim Crisp received a couple of months ago. Except, with one exception, this agreement also does provide for an encroachment agreement, which would allow Mr. White to construct a balcony. It's one of our few buildings downtown that does not have a balcony, that historically did have a balcony. So he's anxious to get that put back in place. Those balcony supports would be, would encroach on the city right of way. That sounds scarier than it is every balcony downtown, the supports encroach on the city right of way. We just have to give him permission to do that. Eight dollars a square foot for his building would amount to about a little over sixty thousand dollars. And while we can't, I don't have the means to accurately anticipate what the final valuation of this building is. I feel confident that, that you will make back in property taxes in future years, this, this investment. The investment will allow him to, to accelerate his renovation. And then also just activating the space will have such a massive impact on downtown. It's been vacant for such a long time and it is such a visible part of our downtown. We're chipping away at those vacant spaces and this is one of our last kind of albatrosses that are such a big project. They really are a labor of love to renovate. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have before public comment.
Any public comment? There being none? Any questions?
No question, but I do have a comment for the council and to you, Ms. Philpott. Just emphasizing the point that we're doing this. We did this with Kim Crisp, we're going to do it with Dennis White, I assume, if the council moves forward with it tonight, to fire sprinkle these buildings downtown and that we are committed to getting them sprinkled. So come and build in downtown Nacogdoches and revitalize these buildings that we all care so much about. I do have one question on the, the balcony. That would fall under the facade easement, is that correct?
Correct, correct. Anything, and, and if our attorney is on the line, he may correct me. But I believe that facade easement covers anything exterior on the building. So if it should fall into disrepair, the city has the ability to go repair it and assess that cost back on the property owner.
Excellent.
Does this go under the Landmark Preservation Board?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Their approval, we originally thought they were going to get, receive their approval for their certificate of appropriateness in July, just a couple of weeks ago. I don't think they were able to get a quorum. So it will be heard by the HLPC in August. And staff anticipates that it will be received favorably. I can't predict it a hundred percent, but, but they've had good news so far.
So basically, we're going to do this for everybody as they come along, is that right?
That is entirely your discretion. We don't have a policy right now. As I believe Councilmember Belliger, Belliger and I spoke a few weeks ago, I would love for you to have a policy in place that says this is what we will do and won't do. Right now, we're just trying to replicate what we've done in the past. I'll note to you, even if you do have a policy that says this is what we will do and won't do, all of those economic development policies still give you the latitude to say, yeah, I, I really don't like that project. Or yes, I do like this project and it doesn't quite meet our, our original guidelines, but yeah, it's good for the community. So I can't say that we would do it for everybody, but I can say most good projects that make a building safer and reactivate a building downtown, staff certainly would recommend approval of those projects.
I don't know if this is the point, the time to bring it up, but there are other towns that have sprinkled their entire downtown area. And then that way, the cost is less because you do it all at once and then give them credits or whatever.
We have researched that pretty thoroughly. And I believe Chief may have, if you, if you have any more info, please dive in. But I will say this, a lot of those towns have struggled to get that across the finish line. Several towns have adopted it. I don't, I've never seen one that's completed it because of the, the intricacies of getting in your building and saying, okay, I'm going to be there tomorrow to install the fire sprinkler systems. That's quite invasive. And so we feel like doing it piecemeal while it's not as efficient, it's possibly more effective because we can get it done building by building rather than waiting for an entire block of building owners to agree to let us in to, to install these systems.
So, so I have seen a city that did it, which is fascinating to me, and completed it. So maybe we can talk out, you know, and, and really explore some ways and the cost to the city.
Sure, absolutely.
And, and, um, and I, I also want to verify, these are out of economic development funds, right?
Correct, correct.
And so that's a good use of economic development funds and collaboration with downtown owners. So maybe we could explore that a little further. So maybe not tonight, but.
Speaking from my business, I mean, I, I wouldn't want mine done while I'm in it.
Right.
I mean, if I was dead and gone and somebody else bought the buildings, then, and they were empty, it would be easy. But it would totally disrupt my daily operations where I, I wouldn't even, I hadn't had a fire there in sixty-four years. And I may have one tomorrow.
We're going to.
And just to give some clarity for the, the, in the, in the past, the reason we entered into this is we're just sticking our toes in the water and seeing if this helps and if this works. Both helps downtown development, including I had, I just didn't realize that building had been vacant for twenty years. I mean, I remember it as McLean's Men's Wear and time flies when you're having fun, but.
I could tell you, it, it, it's a huge, it's a deal breaker on some things.
Right.
On a sprinkler system, I'm telling you, sixty thousand dollars and you're on a tight budget, could be a make or break deal maker, whether or not they go in that building or it sits there and rots for the next fifty years.
Absolutely. And, and the, the tax evaluation difference between what it is today, just a few years ago, it was valued, I think, for less than a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Your small investment could easily turn that into a five, six hundred thousand dollar property valuation.
Easy.
So. We appreciate you thinking through all that too, sorry.
Being able to articulate how much valuation change as we continue to do this, being able to see what that, what return we're getting, I think, would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Not just for us, but for accountability of the taxpayer to say, we're using these economic development funds for this kind of project, but we're also getting valuation added. And this is how much revenue we're receiving on an annual basis and ongoing for that.
Absolutely. And, and we do require everyone that, that enters into a three-eighty agreement to submit annual reports to our office. And so we'll be sure that we share that tax valuation information with, with the city council.
It is my belief that every building downtown Nacogdoches should have a sprinkler system. But that being said, we're setting a precedent now as far as on the sprinkler system. And I don't have an issue with that. And I think that's the way, we should do it, continue until we come, have a policy in place.
Absolutely. And I will note, the next item is a budget amendment associated with this, so I won't come back up and present again.
There's no other discussion?
No.
I'd like to make a, a motion to approve resolution thirteen forty-five dash oh seven dash twenty-three.
Second?
Okay, have a motion, second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Item G. Consider an ordinance, amending ordinance nineteen twenty-nine dash oh nine dash two-two, appropriating various amounts in accordance with budget adopted for ensuing fiscal year beginning October one twenty-two and ending September thirty, twenty-three in the amount of sixty-one thousand, seven sixty for the reimbursement of installation of a fire sprinkler system at four oh one East Main Street. Ms. Philpott?
Can we just go ahead and?
Yeah, we can go ahead and do it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the ordinance outlined in item six G.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, consider, item H. Consider board commission appointments for the convention and visitors bureau and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board due to ordinance amendments to increase board membership. First motion I'd like to make is I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following members to the convention and visitors bureau for a three-year term. Philip Blackburn, Crystal Gibson, John McGuire and Matt McKinnon.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Also, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a three-year term. Rod Allen, Nanette Fawcett, Carlos Whitehead and Michael Molding.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, includes that. Okay, item E. Consider approval to removal of one member and appoint one member to the Housing Authority Board. This is mine. Since we increased the membership from five to seven, the local government code requires that two members are appointed to the board that are tenants to public housing projects over which the authority has jurisdiction or who has, who are recipients of housing assistance administered through the authority's voucher or rental assistance program. So therefore, we, prior to the last meeting, I caught this and we had to add another member that lived in housing to meet the guidelines for the government program. And we had to drop one off. And the, who we dropped off was, who was the name of, Mr. Bill and Kathleen?
I would, if you'd let me.
Yeah.
Mr. Bill is a wonderful gentleman and we're just removing him for the time being until we can correct this and then we'll add him again. He was delightful. He always is delightful, but.
It was, it was my error, so I'll take the blame for it. But I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following Housing Authority Board. The first two, Nicole Upshaw for a two-year term, which is required by local code. Patricia Gonzalez for a two-year term, which is required by government, local government code. Patricia Crane for a two-year term and John Mosley for a one-year term.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. That concludes our regular meeting for July the eighteenth. We will now pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero-eight-seven and also Government Code, section five-five-one point oh-seven-four. Going to executive session, the time is seven forty-five and we will resume shortly. Thank you very much. Back in executive session and and pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero-eight-seven. No action? pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074, deliberations regarding the appointment of or employment of a public officer or employee. Subject is the appointment of a city attorney.
Mayor, I move to authorize you, the mayor, to finalize and execute an employment contract with Jerry Baker for the appointment of city attorney.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Let's see, we came back into, yeah, back into regular session at 8:20. Okay, all right. Now we're done, okay? This meeting is a.